Diane.
Okay, just checking.
Yep, you're the, you're the only official here.
Oh, thank you, Joe. Appreciate it. Good thing you're always on here.
Not one selectman has chimed in yet.
Well, they'll be on in a minute, I guess.
We hope.
Some papers I have to mail today.
What's up?
I see there's a few things here that I didn't have.
All right, everyone.
Wayne, they gave my father one of these with a gold paintbrush.
Last time we met in person, I don't think we opened up with the Pledge of Allegiance, but it usually is the tradition.
We had no flag.
Right, well, a couple of minutes.
Are we early? Oh, yeah, we got a couple more minutes.
You got two minutes.
Let the crowd assemble.
Yeah.
So that was a good meeting last night.
It's tough getting a parking spot.
That they're finally getting into it.
Oh, my gosh, but the history as far as what's gone into it over the last several years was just mind-boggling. Yeah, millions and millions of dollars of engineers everywhere. Just incredible what they've done, but I was really glad to see that the fall auction was on top of the list.
Yeah, yeah, definitely. I can't imagine.
Should have the day.
Pursue that. I swim in the waters.
You're going to get that. Yes, yes, the Mass Lautner is okay. All being group.
This is the time of year where it's just like screaming from the top. Every, every ten minutes.
As you point out, there's so many organizations that would do after that.
And then you get a, you got nightmares.
I think without saying it, I think they were.
So it's just, it'll be like this for the next couple of weeks until we get to like mid-April. And then it will slow down a little bit. Then it'll pick right up.
It's the favorite solution of the state.
Shut up a loft here.
So they sort of.
I could.
That's interesting.
He's perfect.
Soon as I get this cough drop. Start. All right. Oh, man, no gabble. Okay, it is six thirty on March nineteenth, twenty twenty-five, and the hot board of select meeting is now in session. We're going to start tonight's meeting, which we are all here in Town Hall with the Pledge of Allegiance, so. Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. What do we have? We don't have a quorum of the zoning board appeals, right?
I, I advise them to just take it come on later.
Yep, okay.
Yeah, everybody just starts the second open. Yeah.
Well, based on that, we're gonna open the meeting with the opening comments. And the first opening comment is to acknowledge your retirement and to thank you to Wayne Wilson. Wayne and Lorraine are here. So, thanks for coming. How many years?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six years, so you were about Adam's age, probably. Circle of life. Yeah, that's gotta be some kind of record.
I think I was still in my twenties.
When you're twenty, so younger than that. That's impressive. Yeah, so.
No, it's been lucky to have you.
Yeah, definitely. And as we were just discussing, not always an easy job, right? But.
One was a little bit late later.
But anyway, thank you very much. I'm sure these other folks want to have something to say.
For the few times that I've interacted with Wayne, they've been good ones, always good ones.
Wayne, I gotta tell you, I remember you in junior high school. We've been around for quite a while and watching, I think, watching each other kind of grow up to some degree. Obviously, my memory of you in high school was that you seemed to love that drafting class pretty much. And, and you know, Lynn classical drafting maybe was, it was a big step towards a career and obviously you worked for the family business at the same time, so. You got a strong start early on and you've used all that, that knowledge and experience and was able to put it to work for the town also. So thank you for that.
Yeah, I, as Wayne said, he's served as our building inspector for about as long as I've been on this planet. And, you know, you take that into perspective for how much things have changed in thirty-six, thirty-seven years, years in Nahat. Whether, you know, from how many inspections he's been a part of to how many committees he served, you know, on Coast Guard housing, he served with short-term rentals. I'm sure a number of other ones, and that's just in the recent years, from adopting the stretch energy code and, you know, wetlands bylaws and floodplain and, you know, so many different types of things that have changed over the years that he's administered on behalf of the town and has done a tremendous job at it. And, you know, I think, especially seeing now after Wayne's retirement and us trying to go through the motions of trying to fill his shoes. Saying we're lucky is not even enough to express, you know, the service that he's provided the town for, for many, many, many years. And at a, when you look at, when you compare Nahat to other communities and the level of pay that many inspectors are receiving. You know, we've gotten our money's worth. Ten times, ten times over, so. Wayne, I'm sure you have plenty of stories, whether you want to share them, share them.
I'm here.
But to recognize.
Not live, you can tell.
To recognize your commitment to the town, the town put together this plaque for you. Thank you for your service.
Thank you very much.
Something to remember us by.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And sir.
Thank you.
Wayne, good job.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your help.
Good job.
I'd like to, I'd really just like to acknowledge all the support that I've had because it's, because this has been a part-time job. And all of, all of this particular board of selectmen and all the selectmen that I've served under. I'm not, can't give you the count, but a lot, but they've always been very supportive and especially appreciative of the people that work in this building. I mean, they have done nothing but help, support, advocate for me, whatever the case may be, whether it was a budgetary item or some other case. It's, I've never had anything really to complain about as far as help. Everyone's been very supportive. And the people who answer the phone and take messages for me, it's been, it's a long list, actually, yes, but it's, it's been great and I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks again.
Yes, show for the camera. All right. Moving on to the rest of the opening comments. Rob, would you mind reading the motor reports to me?
Understood, yes. We have a winter parking ban in effect until March twentieth, twenty twenty-five, from twelve AM to six AM. Resident parking stickers for twenty twenty-five are now available at nahat.org.
Hey, quick question. What happens with a rogue storm after March?
We would just issue a, a, a one night, you know, a parking ban.
I just noticed that tonight.
Let's see, annual town election is Saturday, April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five. Polls open from seven AM to eight PM at the town hall. Annual dog license, licenses due back to the town clerk by April first, twenty twenty-five, a twenty-dollar late fee will be added for any licenses received after April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. Scholarships now available. Visit the scholarship page at nahat.org for more information. Cultural Council Concert, the smackdabs, Sunday, April thirteenth, twenty twenty-five, at two PM in the main hall of the Nahat Town Hall. Metal recycling pickup, metal, white goods, TV, computer recycling, last Saturday of each month from April twenty-sixth to October twenty-fifth, from eight AM to twelve PM noon, behind the DPW garage. Resident sticker is required. Fees may apply. Visit the DPW page at nahat.org for more information. Curbside leaf pickup, Monday, starting on April twenty-eighth. Week of Memorial Day will be Tuesday pickup. Leaves must be in biodegradable bag only and curbside by seven AM. No plastic bags, open barrels, roots, root balls, or branches. Swim Spring Beach Cleanup, Sunday, May fourth, twenty twenty-five, starting at eleven AM. Volunteers will gather at Lowens Park, uh, yeah, parking lot. New business.
All right, so any other opening comments? Gene, Ron?
I have none.
Okay, I have one, which is that my second three-year term as a selectman comes to a close at the end of April. And I am not seeking reelection, so my term as a selectman will expire at the end of April. A little more than a month away, so, still more than a month away, so I will continue to do what I can for Nahat. Right up until the end, so. Let's get down to business.
Okay.
All right, new biz, new business, a vote to approve town charter change, question on the annual town election ballot. Do you have a motion there? Oh, I can do it. I move that the board of selectmen vote to approve and add the following to the annual town election ballot. Vote to change Article Four, Section Four dash one, Paragraph A of the town charter to increase the term of the treasurer and collector from one year to three years. Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, so this is something we've talked about a few times in meetings in the past. Right now, Ed Locke is our treasurer-collector. Tony has very high praise of the job Ed's doing and it's a little bit of an administrative burden easing, but it's also, you know, a show of security and respect for the job that the treasurer's doing and so I don't know if you want to add anything to me here.
Yeah, this is part two of a procedure for a charter change. Part one was our town meeting vote last year. The town meeting supported this and then the next part is to put it on the ballot and have voters vote on it. And, yeah, you summed up the reasoning why we pushed for it. The history here is that the treasure collector position, I believe at one point, was elected in the town of Nahat. And at some point in the history, the town decided to change it to an appointed position, which I believe is the right thing to do, but didn't change the term length. So we've been, you know, appointing the treasure collector on an annual basis. This would amend the charter to make it a three-year appointment.
Sounds good. Any other discussion? All right, vote, non-roll call vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Okay, well, next is a vote to revise the hours for the annual town election poll hours. Town Clerk Diane Dunphy is on the call, in case we need her. So you want to make, take this motion?
I move the Board of Selectmen vote to revise the hours of Nahat's annual town election on Saturday, April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-five, from seven AM to eight PM, to the new hours of seven AM to seven PM.
Seconded.
All right, Diane, did you have anything you wanted to add at this point?
Sure, I just, the reason for our request to reduce it by only one hour is that it's, it's a little difficult for me to get people to work. It's, it's, we usually, typically, we get between three hundred and four hundred people at a town election and they're always on a Saturday, which is hard to get people to work late on a Saturday night, but, so we're trying to be still accommodating for the general public. We're open twelve hours instead of thirteen, but it just, with the extra vote, with the extra tallying, with any write-in ballots, that it's typically, we're there at least two hours after the polls close, so the difference from getting out at nine versus ten is, is a little more encouraging to be able to get staff to work for me for the election. So that's the primary reason. We are still staying open. I did a study, you looked back on my four years as the town clerk and in the last four years, there was only, there was less than five percent of the population came out and voted between seven and eight and actually, less than three percent between seven oh five and eight o'clock, so I'm hoping that it's not a big disturbance for anyone and that for this particular election, we can switch the hours from thirteen hours to twelve hours.
That's good. Thanks for that background. Curious, is there like a minimum number of hours that the polls have to be opened by state regulation or anything?
Yes, four hours is the minimum, so you have, you have to be open by noon. And at the latest, you can be open as early as quarter of six in the morning, but I'm not sure that's the right move for us, so we could open from any time from seven AM to twelve noon. And then we have to be open at least four hours from that time period forward. So technically. Go ahead, sorry, Joe.
Well, I was just gonna say, so you're, you're, we're cutting out one hour from thirteen to twelve, but you're still three times the, the required duration open.
I am, I'd be happy to move it to like four o'clock, but I don't know that I would be happy. Like I said, I'm not trying to eliminate the ease of voting. We are.
You may have lost your audio, Diane. All right, well, is there any discussion here on those proposed new hours?
No, I'm fine.
I'm good. Yep, same here, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Vote to, we have some event requests. We have that motion.
Let's see, I move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the event request for the Johnson School's sixth grade moving on ceremony on Thursday, June twelfth, twenty twenty-five, at six PM at the Nahat Town Hall.
Seconded. But what happened if we voted this down? Have to go back to second grade, sixth grade. That's great. Congratulations to the upcoming graduates, moving on to the, the big pond of swampscare, so. Any discussion on this?
None.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Vote to approve appointment, Nahat Police Reserve Officer. I move the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the appointment of Joseph Barber as a Nahat Police Reserve Officer, effective March nineteenth, twenty twenty-five.
I'll second that.
And I do see Chief Burlong on the, on the call. Chief, we, we did see Mr. Barber's resume. But appreciate any words you have to add to that?
Yeah, sure, so this is one of those no brainers. He works full-time at the Essex County Sheriff's Department. Currently working in the Transport Division. He works evenings right now, but I'm told he's gonna switch to days. He works a Monday through Friday schedule. He, excuse me, took the opportunity to get certified with post and went to the Bridge Academy and is a certified police officer for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So he'll be a perfect fit. I guess he's willing and eager to work on the weekends. As you know, we're short a person right now. So any help that we can get in that aspect will be greatly appreciated. I, I think he'll be a, a good fit for the town.
Good, I'm glad you found a good candidate, so. Anything else to add?
I was just gonna say that the chief always comes up with good candidates.
I try. I'm trying.
Tough, tough environment from what I've been reading as far as getting people to, to come in and give us a hand, right?
It certainly is.
Yeah, yeah. Vote fire in, please.
Yeah, I, I don't want to put my foot in my mouth, but it seems like we might have lucked out with a full-time candidate who's also full-time in another police department. He's willing to come over and I sent that paperwork up to Town Hall today, so hopefully we can get the ball rolling and, and fill that void.
Excellent, excellent news.
Yeah, if I could just, I don't know if Mr. Wilson's still in the room, but for the record, I want to just congratulate him on his retirement. Job well done.
Thank you, Chief.
Yep, he did leave the building, but maybe he's on Zoom by now. All right, so thank you, Chief. All in favor of approving Mr. Barber as a reserve officer?
Aye.
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 And I, we, we spoke about this last meeting, but I don't know if Chief Burlong was on the call, but the chief is being recognized by the Greater Lynn Chamber of Commerce with a Town Pride Award. So Chief Burlong, while you're here, just, we talked about it last meeting, but wanted to, you know, bring it up while you're on the call. We're very proud that you're receiving that award. I think it recognizes your commitment, not only to the town, but also a lot of the work that you do that goes beyond the police station with emergency management, with fundraising efforts for the Christmas parade and the scholarship or the Christmas toy drive that you do for Boys and Girls Club and a number of other things, including this weekend's Special Olympics Polar Plunge on Long Beach. So congratulations on receiving that award.
Well, thank you. The secret to my success is my wife, who's whispering in my ear that she deserves the award. She, she turned my rock through, through all of this, so she, she, she actually does deserve the recognition.
Very good.
All right, well done, congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, we are going to open and discuss and then close the annual town meeting warrant and send it to the Advisory and Finance Committee.
Mr. Chairman, I move the Board of Selectmen to open the annual town meeting warrant.
Second.
Okay, discussion. Help us out, Tony?
Yeah, I would. Take the vote and then I'll talk about the changes and then we'll.
All right, so we'll vote to open the warrant, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so what we, if you, in your packet you have, and I emailed this over to you, if you go to the third page, you'll see the track changed. Language that we included. We had some placeholders in the last draft that we filled out.
Are we looking at budget numbers here?
Uh, no, you're, the other page to your left. Yeah, flip to page three. So Article nineteen is the Charter Amendment article, changing references of selectmen and Board of Selectmen to select board. This has been a priority of the, of yours to include this at the upcoming town meeting. Article twenty-one, we had a placeholder there for the borrowing language. We've sent this language over to Bond Council. It mirrors the language that we used for a similar borrowing article a few town meetings ago, so I'm sure it's okay. But if they come back with any changes, we can deal with it at another selectmen meeting. Article twenty-three, we had a placeholder in there for the floodplain bylaw language. I spoke with DCR today and it turns out we don't need that article, so we're striking that. And then Article, what was Article twenty-four now becomes twenty-three, and that is the ADU article. We just added the language in there describing what that article does and it lets residents know that the full length of the amendments are available in the town clerk's office.
That's it?
That's it.
That's easy. All right, any discussion about this? So can you, actually, I do have a question. So for Article twenty-one, the climate change preparedness. So is this intended to be a grant match share? Is that the goal here?
This is the, this is the second part of our grant match share for the Short Beach FEMA Mitigation Grant we just received. We had, in twenty twenty-one, or no, I'm sorry, twenty twenty-two, we borrowed five hundred thousand dollars. At that time, we didn't know if we were gonna get the grant or not, but by having funding authorized when you apply for grants, it, in the competitive nature that they are, it helps you, it benefits the town in that competitive application. So that borrowing was authorized, but we haven't borrowed it yet.
Yeah.
Now that we've received the grant and we have our total match amount, which is about one point three, our one point three gets us about three, a little bit more than three point five.
Twenty-five percent match, is that the percentage? Is that, is that how they do it?
Right, right now, I think it's actually a twenty-four percent match. From the, or seventy-six percent match from the, from the federal government. They've said that when we get into the project, that their match can actually climb to ninety percent. So either our portion could be reduced or we could get more funds from them, but at this percentage, our one point three gets another three point five from the federal government project.
It's fantastic.
Yes, it's fantastic.
And I hate to ask, but with the new administration, is this at all at risk or is it past that point or?
Well, we, we had some back and forth with, with our contacts at MEMA regarding the language in the contract. We've squared that up. We're just waiting on Vicky, our project manager, to sign. She's coming in tomorrow. We send it to them, they send back the counter sign, and I think once that contract is signed, we have I feel more, more comfortable, but you never know what could happen.
I think I'll take a vacation date tomorrow.
Yeah. And then just on Article twenty, you see there's still a placeholder there that's regarding the number of offerings for the sale of Coast Guard housing lots. We'll have language for you at an upcoming selectment meeting. Dan and I are still working out the details of that.
All right, sounds good. That's all the questions I had. Anything else?
No.
All right.
Hope it all sticks together.
Yeah. All right, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, excuse me, we need a motion. Yeah, we need a motion to close.
I move the Board of Selectmen vote to close the annual town meeting warrant and send to the Advisory and Finance Committee for their review.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, vote to approve the Board of Selectmen omnibus budget and send to the Advisory and Finance Committee.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to approve the omnibus budget as presented and sent to the Finance Committee for their review.
Seconded.
Okay, motion's made and seconded, and we have some numbers here. Yeah.
Right, so the adjustments in front of you are, it's a thirty thousand dollar difference compared to the previous budget that we have sent over to the Finance Committee. The thirty thousand is fifteen thousand dollars added to capital outlay in the water enterprise and fifteen thousand dollars added to capital outlay in the sewer. We, after doing some further analysis, our retained earnings in our enterprise account is, is fairly healthy. Additionally, Article Six of Town Meeting, as we've talked about, is actually going to, is asking to rescind an appropriation from retained earnings last year. We're using an alternative funding source for the water meter project. So a hundred and seventy thousand that we appropriated last year, we hope to rescind. And use a hundred of that for a capital purchase in the upcoming year, the other. The other seventy will revert back to retained earnings, so. Even i- if that is successful and with this added, it's actually still, you know. Will be forty thousand dollars more in the retained earnings than uh, what it is today. Uh, so we felt with that comfortable amount of funds in the retained earnings. Adding another thirty thousand into water sewer capital outlay gives us a little bit more of a cushion. For unforeseen capital needs like water, sudden water breaks or sewer breaks that we have to make repairs to. Um, so. That is that, and then under, under school, we're actually just, there's no uh, difference in the numbers here. As far as how much money is going to the school and the school's budget. But the school had reworked some of their uh, line item numbers. And we want to be consistent with their, with their line numbers. Now, ultimately, it's just a bottom line number. Uh, when it comes to the school budget, uh, that we approve, um, but. We wanted to be consistent with the numbers that they uh, have put forward to the finance committee. So there's no net difference on, on, in the school.
So just for those that can't see the screen, the school budget is eight hundred and six thousand and thirteen dollars.
Uh, yes.
Oh, I'm sorry, nope, seven hundred and twenty.
Seven twenty.
Thirteen.
So the thirty is all from retained earnings.
Correct, correct, yeah, so that retained earnings is like free cash in the enterprise account. If it goes unspent, it falls back into the retained earnings. Gosh, I don't know if that is the, the accurate, that's just your total. Or.
Change for this area.
For these, for this area, the total school.
Oh, right, yeah, yeah. So this is like the Johnson School Budget.
This is a portion of the Johnson School Budget that. Saw some, saw some changes.
Okay, okay, so you're listing the changes.
Yes, yep.
Okay, that makes sense, otherwise it's a lot longer.
Yeah, yeah.
Um, all right, um, so that's it.
That's all.
And I guess then comes meeting every week probably from now until time, right?
Yes.
That's a busy time. So, okay, um. Hmm, let's see. That was omnibus budget.
So that was discussion.
So we can now vote on that omnibus budget, all in favor?
Hi.
Hi. Um, next is a discussion about ADUs. Um. Help us out there, Tony?
Sure, uh, so as you know, uh. Planning Board uh, sent us an ADU article, uh, that we sent back to them, they've posted. Um, their public meeting, which is next Tuesday at seven PM. Um, we, after voting on that, uh, after the board voted on their. Um, article and sent it back to them for the public process, we also shared that the planning board. Dan, myself, we shared it with um, Margaret Healy at um. Early.
Yeah.
Uh. At the E O H L C.
Formerly of the AG's office.
Formerly of the AG's office, to have her do a review of the proposal to flag any potential issues. Um, that we might need to fix before or at town meeting. Uh, she did provide us some comments, Dan and I uh, had a phone conversation with her and walked through some of those comments. We uh, were lucky enough to sneak into her schedule, cause she's answering three hundred and fifty-one communities. Um, and we went to the planning board meeting last night and uh, spoke about, you know, the comments that she provided. Um, there were some, you know, if there was five or six comments that she provided. Uh, two or three of them are uh, likely gonna result in a floor amendment. Uh, because of where we are in the process, that would be the time to make the change. Um, two of them were pretty straightforward. Uh, the other, we're, we're working with the planning board on what, on what the uh, best approach is for change in the language. Really, none of the comments were, uh. You know, this is, uh, in conflict with the law or the regs. They were more like, um, you might word that differently, so it makes sense in that it's consistent with. Um, you know, the regs and the law.
And she didn't, she didn't come out and say that this is wrong, you gotta change, like, is it keep an eye for this, this might be an issue, she was just sort of raising up some red flags. Because it's an unsettled area of the law, how this is gonna mesh with real life enforcement is still a mystery. And how the statute is gonna mesh with their new regs is still up to be, up to be determined, so she is just thinking, this is an area that we're concerned about. Uh, but just keep an eye on it, but she's, she was very helpful, she didn't, like Tony said, she didn't come out and say, yeah, this is, this is your way off base, she's saying anything like that, she was very helpful. And uh, we, we digested that, and we delivered it to the planning board, and they were sharp enough to make some comments and decisions, not decisions, but at least. Suggestions about how we can uh, incorporate her, her thoughts, and the next step is for the board to uh, agree on the changes, I think there were three or four. That was it, and then, and then, not to the actual bylaw itself, that's already set in stone for the moment, the draft bylaw, but the motions that would go on the floor. To make the changes that Margaret suggested.
So Dan and I are gonna be working with members of the planning board from, you know, until. Try to come up with what that language might be before Tuesday night's public hearing.
Okay, yeah.
Uh, we felt it was important that at that public hearing, it would make sense to. Explain uh, to the public what potential floor amendments they may see. And then certainly, uh, to include those in the planning board's recommendation. Um, that will be included in the finance committee book, so that residents can anticipate. Uh, what those changes are gonna look like, um. And, uh. With, with your support, I, I plan to. Uh, testify at the planning board meeting, um. Along the term, uh, you know, to speak about those changes that we're working on with the planning. And I think it would be, um, I think it would be helpful if. Once we get those worked out, I'll speak to you individually, if we're all on the same page, that uh. I'd be able to say, you know, the selectmen are supportive of these changes and appreciative that the planning board's considering them, so. If you're uh, good with that, that's the, that's the game plan.
Yeah.
When is that, Tuesday?
Tuesday night.
What time?
Seven.
Seven.
Yeah, so, um.
Upstairs?
No, I think it's uh, it's, it's probably hybrid, probably here, it's probably a hybrid, this here and on Zoom.
Well, it's good, um, it's good that we're gonna have an article on the, on the warrant and um. Couple minor tweaks, I guess, on, on the floor, but it's good, we'll be prepared.
Great if we can get this passed, I think that would be a big step.
You sound excited.
Very excited.
Uh, you know, you can still do a writing.
Um, all right. Uh, anything else on ADU?
That's it.
Um, all right, next one, Coast Guard Housing Update.
Uh, Coast Guard Housing Update, so we've uh, relisted, um. Lots ten, uh. Four and five, um, so lot four is up for bid, uh, Tuesday, the twenty-fifth. Uh, lot ten is up for bid Thursday, the twenty-seventh, and then lot five is up for bid on Tuesday, April first. Um, lot ten, we had, uh, originally awarded lot ten, uh, but we. The buyer actually backed out prior to purchase and sale agreement, uh, so we've, so we've relisted it. Um, it sounds like from Lisa that we already have a lot of interested, um. Potential buyers looking at lot ten, uh, and the other lots, lot four and five. Um, the other uh, lots that we've put up for bid, so eight, six, and two. Um, are all under purchase and sale agreement, and um, it sounds like, uh. S- at least two of those are interested in closing early, uh, so. Our legal counsel's working with the buyer's legal counsel to put together closing documents, um.
So how many are left?
So we have four lots left, three of them are vacant. Um, and those three are gonna be up for sale later, uh, next week and the week after. Um, and. When, if, if we, I'll have to relook at the math, but uh, with. When those three, should those three that are under agreement close? Uh, all debt will be paid off, as you know, we already paid off the one point eight million that was due in January. We have received about half of the funds to pay off the secondary debt, which was to prepare the lots for sale, one point three million. With those closings, we'll be able to pay off the rest of that debt, which our goal was to get it paid off before the end of the fiscal year, so we're ahead on that. And, um, we're into. Profit area now, um, at about, uh, at about a million dollars. Um, and then you have four more lots that'll be up for sale in the future. Uh, so I think even if those lots, you know, depending on what they sell for, but on the, on a conservative estimate. Um, average, the, the town could be looking at anywhere from two to three million dollars in, in profit from the sales. Uh, which obviously isn't available to us until next uh, fiscal year, so. Uh, we're heading.
Now, now what happens here? If, if we sell down and you've got three left?
Mm-hmm.
Those three, we have to hold on selling those?
No, we, the, the, we uh, relisted them as an addendum to the current offering. Uh, so they still are considered part of the second offering.
So we can.
Yeah, so we have them on the list, if they, if they, uh, as, as we talked about, we have, we're gonna go to town meeting. To seek approval to, uh, for additional offerings, uh, so that if we, if we needed, we can, we have that ability.
Awesome.
All right.
Great job, Tony.
Uh. It's a team, um, the, the Lynn Item did an article on it the other day, um, and they. I, I gave them a list of uh, names to include in the article, they ended up just including the committee. Uh, committee titles, um, but um, there's a lot of folks that were, served on either advisory and finance committee. Coast Guard, uh, design and development committee, obviously the board of selectmen, um. The volunteer realtors that helped us at the beginning of this process, of course Lisa. Um, uh, Scortus, who's our listing agent now, and so there's, it's a long list of people that have, uh. Contributed to, to where we are today, so. I'll relay the uh, credit to them.
Yeah.
Great. Um, town administrators report.
Um. We are at, uh, our Lowlands Pump Station project is right at about eighty percent. Uh, they are gonna be receiving materials for new fencing, uh, for start prepping the yard for pavement. Uh, the exterior is done, the interior is done, and there, the last piece is, uh, the. Computer, uh, system that actually runs all the pumps, uh, should be delivered in April or May and installed. Uh, so projected, um, completion date is late May, early June. Um, Goddard Drive, we, uh, water main upgrade is, uh, started today. Uh, so the replay, increasing the size of that water main, going down Goddard Drive and services, as well as the, uh. Low flow hydrant that used to be at the end of Goddard Drive, we're uh, upgrading that, so that project's starting today. Or started today, um, we're gonna be, next week, we have so- some additional uh, sewer lining. And manhole installations occurring, uh, we've also, um. Signed a contract with Vicky Masson to initiate the procurement process for our paving schedule for the spring. Uh, which mostly includes Emerald Road and, um, the intersection by the Village Church. You may recall, we got a, a state earmark of, in the state budget for ADA improvements to the, uh. To the sidewalks there, which are. Coincides with the Village Church's ADA improvements that they did on their property. Uh, so hopefully that work will be done in the spring. We also signed a contract, uh, with Wright Pierce to start the procurement, uh, development process. For the water meter project, um. So the, over the next couple of weeks, Zach and I will meet with Wright Pierce to develop that, those procurement docs and get that out on the street. And. Uh, we have, on the town hall ramp, we've scheduled a historical commission meeting, uh, because this. Building has a, um, preservation restriction on it, and technically is under the control of the historical commission. They have to give the approval on the design of the new handicap ramp, uh, so once we get that, we can go out to bid. Uh, unfortunately, our goal was to have it done before town meeting, but. We don't wanna be under construction during elections or town meetings, so it likely won't. Likely won't start construction on that until after town meeting.
Does that go in the same location as the?
Yeah, it's a little bit longer, um, but it's the same, same spot. Um, we had to, you have to extend it in order to meet the code.
Yeah.
Um, ADA accessibility, and. I mentioned the Special Olympics plunge this weekend. Um, Kristen, uh, published the farmer market dates, uh, for this upcoming summer, so those are. Uh, online, they'll get put in the, uh. Tiffany Times, and she'll start her process of, uh, seeking potential vendors to participate in the farmers markets. And, um. Oh, so the council on aging, um, had a St. Patrick's Day party on. Uh, Monday, they had, uh, over thirty people in attendance, uh, so the, the council on aging, you know, I'm gonna give them a shout out too, and. Board and the volunteers and Mary Minor, all the work that they do, that was here, and uh, that was a great, uh, great event for them, so. Um.
When's your boat launch?
May ninth.
May ninth?
Correct. And May ninth boat launch.
Are you?
May eighth, in my case.
All right, so that's, uh, that's my report for tonight.
Great, um, I think you were gonna talk to National Grid maybe about the gas line on Goddard Drive too?
Yes, uh, so Zach and I met with National Grid, uh. I think it was last week, um, to talk about. All of the, their gas work that they wanna do in over the next couple of years. We do that on an annual basis, what we try to do is plan out like three to four to five years in advance. Um, because they like to get into a street before we get into it for any type of sewer or water or. Paving work, uh, so we had a meeting to talk through that, but we also talked about Goddard Drive as well, so we've initiated. Um, a request for that. In the, when they replaced, uh, the gas main on Castle. And Gardner and Tri Mountain, they installed a T at the corner, at the intersection for Goddard. Uh, anticipating that we would be adding, uh, but at the time, the lots weren't up for sale yet, or I, I, actually, I don't even think they were demolished yet. Uh, so they held off until now that, now that we have properties sold, and a lot of the buyers are looking to. Come in for permits, they need to know whether or not they're gonna have access to gas, uh, so it's on their radar, we ended up bringing them up there and showing them. Uh, the property, we also talked to them about some of the uh, electrical lines and pole issues that are up there too. Uh, so it's on their radar, and hopefully we get that moved along quickly.
And was that, was that heritage trail improvement? And was that, was that heritage trail improvement that runs between the lots, is, is that gonna wait till after the those lots are developed?
Our, our plan was to do that this spring.
Okay.
Before the lots get developed, so that
That's probably good.
property lines are defined.
Clear footprint.
Yeah.
They did a nice job on Greystone.
Cleaning up.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Thank them for that.
Yeah, yeah, DBW is switching over from, you know, snow, winter operations into spring operations. They're doing a lot of work right now, trying to get ready for the good weather. Part of that is cleaning up damaged berm from plows and identifying potholes and, you know, kind of listing out their plan for those types of repairs that'll happen once the hot top facilities open up and can do that in the spring.
I, I think I'm probably repeating myself, but for all of us, the DPW did a great job, just one thing.
Yes, yeah.
Really, really clean. Stayed well ahead of the storms.
Yeah. Alright.
We're not, we're not out yet. I do not trust the month of March.
That's wise.
Let's not, let's not celebrate until April.
Well, you're juggling a lot of balls, Tony.
Yeah, yeah.
Well done, as always, anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Alright, next up is citizen comment. So if there's anyone on Zoom that would like to ask a question or make a comment, feel free to unmute yourself and go ahead. You can also raise your hand on Zoom, which we can see the screen. So we're looking. Not seeing anyone come off of mute. Not seeing any hands go up. Going once. Twice, okay, so no citizen comment today. I'll make a motion.
Well, we have a bit of an issue.
Oh, right, we do have a bit of an issue.
Because we're not slated to open the, we, we can go to executive session, with the reopen to bring the ZBA, ZBA in sometime at seven thirty-ish. Or it might be wise just to wait ten minutes, leave everything open, and then go into the.
Are they scheduled to get online at seven thirty?
Yes, I just, I just checked to the chair, and she said, she'll get there as soon as you can, but she was about seven thirty.
Okay, okay.
Recession.
Uh, yeah. Alright, yeah, we'll be back in ten minutes.
We need to, do we need to move for a recess, or can we just go?
No, we'll just do it.
Alright, alright, so we're gonna go to recess for about ten minutes, I'm gonna just put us on mute. Hey, we're back.
We're here.
Hi, Jocelyn.
Hi, Tony, how are you?
Uh, okay, so see Cam?
See David Walsh?
David on too?
Yeah, he's the, the, the Golden Gate Bridge.
There you go. Okay, so, so Jocelyn, you have a quorum.
I do, as a matter of fact, we have an extra, we thought we were only going to have three, myself, David Walsh, and Jake Brown. But we also have Cameron Merrill this evening. He did, was able to.
Uh, which, who, which one is Jake Brown on the call here?
I don't see him on the board here. Jake, are you on? I know he was traveling, and he was expected to get back around this time, and he said he would join us. So it may be that he's not back yet. So we do still have a quorum though, because we have David, Cameron Merrill, and myself.
Alright, so I think if you can just simply announce that you're opening the meeting of the ZBA.
I will, we're going to do that right now. And today is March nineteenth, two thousand twenty-five, it is seven thirty-two PM. And my name is Jocelyn Campbell, and I am Chair of the Nahad Zoning Board of Appeals. And we are opening this meeting tonight of the zoning board of appeals for the purposes of having a joint meeting with the selectmen. And so what I'm going to need now is a vote from one of the members of the zoning board to, and I see that, excuse me, I see that Jake Brown just, just joined us, to open the meeting and to go into executive session at some point. Can I have a motion from one of the members for that purpose?
I'll move, this is David Walsh, I'll move that we open the meeting of the Board of Appeals.
Okay, you're gonna move also to go into executive session?
And I will move also, we go into executive session when you so call it for it.
Is there someone else on the board who could have seconded that motion?
Second.
By Cameron Merrill, it's been seconded? Okay, and is there any discussion on the motion? Having, having no discussion, all in favor?
David Walsh, aye.
Cameron Merrill, aye.
Jocelyn, just describe the reasoning, you know, what we're gonna discuss.
I'm gonna do that next, Dan.
Okay.
Yes, we're gonna do that next. And so, uh, once we've taken that vote, which we have just now, and the motion has passed, we are going to go into executive session for the purposes of discussing litigation strategy relative to thirty and thirty-eight Emerald Road and a suit that has been filed between Callenbach and the Nahad Zoning Board of Appeals. And after the executive session, we do not expect to come back to an open public meeting. Okay?
Perfect, good. So then, if the selectmen can do, can take your, make your motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move the Board of Selectmen vote to adjourn to executive press and pursue it to general laws, chapter thirty A, subsection twenty-one A three, to meet jointly with the Zoning Board of Appeals to discuss strategy with respect to Callenbach versus Zoning Board of Appeals and action pending in Essex Superior Court, and two, to meet alone to discuss strategy with respect to active litigation involving Northeastern University Marine Science Center, four thirty Nahat Road, Nahat, if the Chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the negotiating position of the public body.
And now the Chair do declare that an open meeting will have a detrimental effect on the negotiating body, and we will not return to open meeting. Alright, seconded, any discussion? Here in scene, none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, our executive session, so.
Alright, so anyone, anyone on the call that is not on the Board of Selectmen or is a ZBA, we're gonna kick you off the meeting here, I'm gonna turn off the live stream and the recording. Jocelyn, you said Jake joined us, but I still don't see him on the.
He, he's trying to get on, I think he might be having a little bit of technical difficulty.
Okay.
Cam, do you have Jake's cell number?
I do.
Could you text him and let him know that if he can't get on, if he's traveling, that we do have three people here, so he doesn't have to worry about it, but we do, we'd appreciate if he was on, it'd be great, but if he's having a half tough time, tell him not to worry too much about it, because you're here.
Alright, I'll let him know.
Thank you.